Rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a roll call.
Alderman King. Hello. Alderman King. Alderman Doe. Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderman Tar.
She's here, but she's muted.
Right. Alderman Cassetti.
Also muted.
Alderman Janetti.
Trying my best to hit that. If you see the ass.
Here.
You hit.
I'm here. Janetti's here.
Here.
I'm here.
Alderman Spigaro. Alderman Yelman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers. I saw him. Alderman Malone.
Is muted.
I'm not muted.
No, Chicago is.
Right.
I'm here.
Alderman Malone is here. Alderman Stewart.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman DeLibro.
And Not is here as well, but I didn't hear you call him.
I did call him. Ten present, four absent from my count.
Thank you. I declare quorum. All right, so consideration of previous minutes, we have four sets of minutes. Unless there's a an objection with this, I'd like to to vote on them all together. I mean, you receive them trickled after the meetings. But because we now have a meeting last month, there are the November ninth, twenty twenty-one minutes. The December fourth dual meetings of the organizational meeting, which was one page, the December fourteenth full board meeting, and the January fourth special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve all four of these. By Mamon.
My second.
Second by Not. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I'm going to abstain. I believe it was the December fourteenth meeting I wasn't present, so I'm abstaining from that, Trish.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So motion passes. All right, public session. A lot of people here, I'm assuming some are. So just quickly, Josh's rules for public session, please identify yourself, name and address for the public record if you speak. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes or preferably less. And just a reminder that it's not a Q and A, although, you know, we'll try to address things or get them answered for you in the future. Would anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? And I'm assuming you have to raise your hand and we will.
Mr. Mr. President, Mr. Federn has already raised his hand and he's unmuted.
Okay. Name and address for the public record, please.
You got it, Josh. John Federn, sixty-three Hubble Avenue. The Board of Apportionment and Taxation is one of the most important boards that any city can have, but it's especially so in Ansonia. The membership should be representative of the city at large and be apolitical in the best interest of its residents. And according to the city charter, section thirty-eight, the Board of Apportionment and Taxation is to consist of seven members, appointed by the mayor with the approval of the Board of Aldermen. Those seven members are to be divided equally between the two leading political parties and include one affiliated voter. And all vacancies shall be filled from the political party in which the vacancy occurs by nomination by the mayor and confirmed by the Board of Aldermen. Currently, the city of Ansonia website lists seven members on boat. However, per the minutes of every meeting since April of last year, only five members have been included in the roll call. I discovered this yesterday morning and thought it was quite odd. And when I brought this up at last night's boat meeting during the first public session, I was told to bring it up at tonight's Aldermanic meeting. And then I was met with silence as Alderman Mamon, who was in attendance, interrupted public session to remind the board that public session is not a Q and A session. So finally, during the second public session, I was able to ascertain that, yes, there are indeed only five members, but only after being told to go look it up at the town clerk's office. I'm still amazed that such a simple question would be dodged and dismissed. So of the five members of the board of boat, there are three Republicans, one Democrat, and one whose affiliation is unknown, as is not listed on the city's website. So these are my following questions. Why does the city website list seven members when there have been only five since April of twenty twenty-one? Are the members of this board comfortable knowing that boat has been operating in violation of the city charter for close to a year? And were you even aware of this before today? Why haven't these vacancies been filled since they became open last year? It's been ten months. Considering the composition of the board, those seats are to be filled by Democrats, according to the charter. Now, I will concede, while it would behoove a town committee to check for vacancies, and unfortunately, that had not been happening under prior leadership, the onus and responsibility to fill vacancies is one hundred percent in the mayor's lap. There's no option not to fill vacancies. The charter is clear on this, that all vacancies in said board shall be filled from the political party in which the vacancy occurs by nomination by the mayor and confirmation by the Board of Aldermen. It's not maybe filled, not might be filled, not should be filled, but shall be filled, and that wording compels action be taken. And none has been taken in almost a year. Additionally, if the mayor fails to make nominations to fill vacancies, it is this board's responsibility to do so per section nine of the charter. So this board has also fallen short of its responsibilities and violated the charter. Now, these vacancies have become known. Since they've become known, we've already submitted, somebody actually already submitted their name today for nomination, and it was rejected today. Not due to a lack of qualifications by the nominee, but because, quote, "we have a Democrat on board," unquote. That statement is true. The mayor's brother Gary Cassetti, the chairman of boat, is a registered Democrat, but there are still two seats to fill. The response is very confusing, and unless maybe the mayor and his advisors are aware of the charter requirements of boat membership, I don't know, but this was very confusing in the response. We have a charter for a reason, much in the same way we have ordinances and laws. It should not be up to the people of Ansonia, like myself, to ask for accountability and compel the city to abide by its own charter, even if it's not convenient or expedient. For me, as a private citizen, I must follow the laws and ordinances or face consequences. Like if I decided to start driving down East Main Street the wrong way because it was inconvenient to get to my home on the North End, I would be ticketed and forced to pay a fine. The difference here is there's no true consequence for violating the charter. There's no such thing as the Charter Police. Additional nominations for boat will be forthcoming. Contrary to Alderman King's assertion at last night's boat meeting, there are Democrats ready and willing to serve. All that needs to be done is to be asked. Also, Alderman King's assertion last night that all Democrats in Ansonia do is complain, I would remind him and this board and understanding that this term has been bastardized of late, that this is what legitimate political discourse looks like. I urge the mayor to pass the forthcoming nominations onto this board for final confirmation so that the Board of Apportionment and Taxation is properly composed and in line with the city charter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for visiting. And do we have other commenters? Questions? Put a hand up here. I see Bill Phipps. John, can you unmute him?
Yep, he's been he's been asked to unmute, Mr. Phipps.
I have unmuted, sir. I presume you can hear me?
Looks like you're at the Golden Gate Bridge.
Yeah, right.
How you doing?
Good. Listen.
Name and name and address.
Oh, yeah. The name is William George Phipps, and I live at twenty-seven Johnson Street in the great city of Ansonia.
Thank you.
Anyway, tough guy to follow there after Mr. Federn gave his speech, which I have to concur is completely accurate. But that's beside the point. When I've been reading through the paperwork and Josh, I think I sent you an email a while back. In the December minutes, I discovered, you know, there were some what errors, but I wasn't wasn't able to bring it up because it wasn't my time as a private citizen, according to the agenda. But in any case, I'll just put it out there. If you want to fix them, fine. If not, at least I run a record. When you waived a section one forty-five last in the minutes of the charter, Mr. Mamon made the motion, and he also seconded it according to the documented minutes. So that'll have to be repaired. Can't second your own motion. At least I don't think you can. The attendance is reported as twelve and two, but the little bar or the little chart that's in there shows eleven and three. So you probably want to, these are just boilerplate, but sometimes a boilerplate can come back and bite you. You know, if it goes in the wrong direction like the court someday. And the the dialogue that was mentioned about the one forty-five charter wave is not attributed to anybody. I presume that Attorney Marini made that dissertation. And I would think that that should probably be attributed to him. I don't think Tony made it. I think it was John, but it doesn't say that in the minutes. That's all. And the other thing I picked up this minutes for now, the resignations from Mr. Martin regarding two two boards that he sits on. It says the Ansonia Historical Society on the agenda, and it says the Derby Historical Commission on his resignation letter. So I don't know what the Derby Histor- I don't know what either of them are, so I guess, again, for documentation.
Yep. That's definitely an error, and I already talked to Trish about that. And I believe the other things that you pointed out last month, FYI, on the double nominate, like I believe those are corrected in, Trish, remind me, but I think we put those in the amended December twelve minutes.
Yeah, I was going for the minutes that were on file in the computer. So it may well be, I just, I just thought obliged to mention it just in case, just so everything's, you know, that one forty-five ruling, I think, went way off the rails. You know, the charter is built by the people, for the people. I heard that somewhere way back. And it can only be revised by the people, by the referendum process. I think that's plain and simple, but it's probably going to be a chat for another day.
Thank you.
Anyway, and the other thing that I, oh, Gary Cassetti is misspelled.
Yeah.
He only has one R.
I caught that.
I'm nitpicking. Excuse me, but what the hell, I found them, so I should, I just share them. And the other thing.
No, go ahead.
And the other thing that I have, and it sort of goes back to last night's boorah with respect to the members on the commissions. And it's our website. I don't know who the webmaster is. I'm sure we have one, but if you peruse the website, it's not up to date. And I think that's a critical marketing and you know, an offering that we have to the public, to the world, actually, when you talk about a website. And it should be accurate and it should be up to date. So whoever the webmaster is, maybe they got to have a look at the way we do things. Just for a ha-ha, and the last thing before I shut my mouth is, I went through all of the commissions that are listed, you know, who the members are, Democrat, Republican, and there are fourteen of them that are incorrect. So in other words, it's maintenance. It's probably not a big deal.
Incorrect on the website? Incorrect on the website? Not accurate, you mean?
Not accurate. Yeah, the members are either dead or their things have expired or whatever, so a little maintenance is probably in order in that respect. And then the website should be a critical part of our public offering, because as you say, anybody can see it. And if somebody's nosing around the town and want to do it quietly, what's the first thing to go to is the website. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you, sir, for your time and Godspeed.
Thank you. I was gonna say, good to see you, but I can't, so we'll move on.
Yeah, I
Thank you.
I had some surgery today, and I got a great big bandage on my face, so I didn't want to give anybody the whoopsies or something.
All right, thanks. I don't know who's next in the queue here with, oh, Brian, I believe, is the only one.
I believe Matt got his hand up.
Chris McCarskey has had his hand up for a while.
I do not see that on my roll, but I do have.
Let me see one hand up right now.
He's unmuted. Matt. I think that may be Matt McGowan. Matt, can you hear us?
Yep. Name and address for the public record and then hit it.
Matthew McGowan, forty Winter Street, Ansonia, Connecticut. I just came here for a few questions and a statement. Why wasn't the one million dollar shortfall brought, you know, on our city budget brought and caught to the public's attention a lot sooner? Seemingly, there were no checks and balances in place to make sure mistakes like this didn't happen. Did anybody in did anybody from the mayor's office to the Board of Aldermen, to the Board of Taxation and Appropriation, not check our one hundred thirty-four thousand dollar a year CFO or CFO's work? I mean, that kind of seems highly inappropriate, especially after almost being a year of this. Um, I would also ask that this board makes a pledge, hopefully tonight, to bring an actual fully functional community center to Ansonia and hopefully work with Derby on making it happen. It would be, it would be it would not only help at-risk young adults, you know, from ages sixteen to twenty, but it would also bring some much-needed equity and social support to the working-class people of Ansonia and Derby. It would be a hell of a lot cheaper too to do this than it would to hire more police officers. There's plenty of stats out there about this. And that's my two cents.
Thank you. All right, next. And Brian Perkins and John, it needs to be unmuted.
Andy is.
Okay, perfect. Name and address for the public record, please.
Sure. Brian Perkins, Sixth West Road. Yeah, it's good to have. Awesome. Cool. So really, the first thing I want to start with is about six months ago, I came to this board and I spoke about the ARPA funds that were coming to the city of Ansonia. I requested some kind of oversight on that. I requested some kind of you know, way to work with the residents on finding what the best use of those funds were. And since I've, you know, actually spoken at the meeting six months ago, there have been cities, municipalities across Connecticut, across the country, really, all of Rhode Island, and all of their cities have had public forums, public hearings, town halls, that kind of thing, for the residents to make their voices heard and, you know, work with the residents to find what the best use of this money is. And Ansonia really hasn't done that. I've noticed that, you know, in terms of transparency with the ARPA funds, there's been a complete lack of transparency of what's going on with the funds, with what's being spent on. And like I said, six months ago, I came to this board and asked about that, and I'm not too sure if, you know, if it falls on you, President Schur, if it falls on the mayor, that that didn't happen, that, you know, there's that lack of transparency there, but that's something that I would like to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Who else would like to address the Board of Aldermen tonight from the public? Please raise your hand and we'll unmute you. Second call, public session. Anyone west to, oh, here we go. Move, just moved around. Jerry?
Yeah, hi.
Name and address.
Jerry Cristiani, two eighty-four Wakely Avenue. On the issue of the community center proposal or project, I was on a Zoom call a couple of weeks ago about that. I was told that there would be an opportunity to have our voices heard as citizens about it. I was a virtual employee for twenty years, and it took me, you know, two and a half hours to find this meeting. And, you know, basically, it was posted, unless I'm missing something, which I can always allow as possible, a couple of hours before the meeting, I mean, and I was involved with the prior meeting that was working on putting together some sort of a project for the community center. So I'm a little concerned that, you know, there will be or possibly are other people that would be interested in that subject that just wouldn't even know how to have their voices heard. But on that topic, you know, I spent a lot of time at the closed YMCA on State Street, swimming there for an hour and a half, two hours, five days a week. I saw babies and toddlers being taught how to swim, children being taught how to swim. I saw daycare programs, after-school programs. I saw all kinds of wonderful things going on there, and I know that was the YMCA, but it's no more. And, you know, I think that there are many opportunities in a community center for things like that and for, for instance, teens to have activities that keep them off the streets and out of trouble. You know, this is a nascent discussion, but there also appears to be a discussion about the same potential space, which is down on Maple or Olson Drive or wherever it might be, for some sort of a for-profit recreational facility, which is for people who can afford to pay for it. I'd like to understand why, you know, how that plays against the potential for its wonderful benefits to accrue to the citizenry of this town and maybe even of Derby. You know, it's a distressed area. It's a, it's an area where people cannot necessarily afford some of the things that might be offered. But I think the first benefit ought to be given to the citizenry of these towns. So, you know, that's my two cents. I mean, it isn't very far along as far as the discussion of the community center, but I think it's kind of far along. If I could find out about it, that there might be a for-profit sort of athletic facility put in Olson Drive in lieu of maybe a community center. You know, as I say, it's all nascent, so I don't know where it is.
Okay, I would just comment that I don't think that meeting that you referenced at the outset of your talk was a city meeting. I believe that was, that came from another group, that maybe the city posted it as a courtesy, but I'm pretty sure that was not city organized, so.
Well, I don't think it was.
So as far as the timing of, you know, how much in advance it was, I just comment on that, but thank you for coming. Thanks for your comments.
You're welcome.
Next up, Chris.
Chris M. is up, and I'm asking him to unmute, and he's unmuted. Chris, sorry about that. I didn't see you on the actual video. I was keeping my eyes on the actual participant list for virtual hands. So sorry, we didn't get you in the proper order. We, I hear that you had your hand up for a little bit.
It's okay. I'm here now. I'm actually wondering about some things from the last time I was at a meeting where my easement basically got killed. And nobody had afforded me as to why. The closest that I came to finding out anything is I was told in light of the new evidence. And that was actually stated by Bobby Tar. You know, that it should be voted down. Now, I have a pile of rocks over here next to my front stairs. Nobody can get even close to it. The the mail person cannot smoothly get in there to go and deliver the mail. And I'm finding that any of my requests for any kind of information or anything are just being ignored at this point. This is not supposed to be any kind of question and answer, but, um, your actions as a group has raised so many questions with me. You know, as to why I can't get some simple information that I've requested as long as a month ago. Or even the reasons that you find I should not have a an easement. So maybe one of my Aldermen can get back to me and at least have me understand what happened over there. Because I'm finding that the neighbor over here that wants to keep this is a dangerous corner. It's really the most dangerous corner in all of Ansonia. The entire neighborhood thinks so, and they've said it twice through petitions for me knocking on my, on their doors, and they've said definitely, you know, we need that fixed. And I'm just I'm just not seeing a lot of cooperation in some very simple things. So maybe if one of my Aldermen can get back to me, or maybe your John Marini, that would be fantastic.
And we may actually have a little bit of an update for you a little later, so, Chris, stay for the staff portion of the meeting to hear a little bit on that.
Thank you for coming. Do we have anyone else from the public who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen tonight? Looking through the pages here. Uh.
Mr. Knapp.
Yes. Mr. Knapp, he was here, disappeared, but his hand.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Hit it.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I saw something regarding, I guess it was at a boat meeting last night where one of the Aldermen, Mr. King, made a comment that the Democrats, all they do is complain. They never volunteer for anything. I take offense to that as a volunteer, as a Democrat, and as a citizen. I've chaired many committees, vice chaired many committees, foundations, groups, what have you, and coached every sport that the city of Ansonia volunteer coached every sport, boy and girls, that the city of Ansonia offered when my kids were growing up. So I do take offense to the fact that Democrats don't volunteer, and there was plenty of Democrat coaches and volunteers on those boards. I also remember a while back where I was at one of the board meetings. And during the public session, I believe it was, I offered my services to volunteer to serve on the board of the board for the Ansonia Housing Authority and any other board. Went unheard, I guess, never heard anything, never heard a word. So I, for the record, I want to go out there and say again that I put my name out there to volunteer to serve on a board or boards in the city of Ansonia and represent the city of Ansonia. My second issue I have is I see on the agenda that you are going to be, I guess, discussing the disposition of the Olson Drive site. Have the city, the citizens of the city of Ansonia had an opportunity to provide any input into what they'd like to see down there at the city in Olson Drive? I certainly haven't heard anything or no, seen anything where I could provide any input as to what I'd like to see down there. I love soccer. My son played soccer. I coached soccer. Not saying that the soccer pay for, pay for play is not viable or not what the city needs, but I'd like to see what other folks in the city like to see happening in the development in that property down there in the city of Ansonia. And again, for the record, I'll say it again, that I would put my hat in the ring to volunteer to serve on any of the boards that need need some representatives or members. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for visiting. Uh, any other members of the public who'd like to address the Board of Aldermen tonight? Raise your hand. Oh, Mr. Knapp, can you provide your name and address for the record?
It's David Knapp, three Glen Drive, the great city of Ansonia.
Got that, Trish? Three Glen Drive.
I got it.
All right. Second call, any members of the public who wish to address the board tonight? And third and final call, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public session, move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. First and foremost, I want to thank Public Works Director Mike D'Alessio and his crew on a job well done, keeping our streets clear and residents safe during the past month. Great job to our entire Public Works team. I also want to thank Police Chief Wayne Williams on the fine work he has done as our acting chief. And congratulate him on what I know will be a fine career as Ansonia's permanent chief. Thank you and your fine men and women of the Ansonia PD for all you do for the residents of Ansonia. Now, although it may not feel like it, I want to remind you that spring is right around the corner.
Thank God.
Groundhog may not have seen his shadow. It has, it has seen a draft of our budget proposal for next year. And from what the groundhog has told me, in extreme confidence, we can expect another year with no tax increase. But seriously, there has been a lot of talk about what that budget will look like. Well, I am proud to say the budget is nearly complete. Well, I am proud to say the budget is nearly complete. And over the next six weeks, we will be tightening up our projections on the estimates, or what I call what-ifs. Unfortunately, some of our state money did not come in as promised. But I can assure you that taxes will remain stable for our residents this year once again. Thank you to our CFO Kurt Miller and the Finance Department for crunching the numbers and keeping us on track nonetheless. And along with the coming of spring, you can also expect to see more big progress all across our great city. For example, I can tell you another great restaurant is on its way downtown. I'm not supposed to tell you what kind, but I will say that Primavera isn't just an Italian word for spring. You can also expect progress on our State Street revamp, our Franklin Street sidewalk project, and of course, the Nolan Field firefighter-themed splash pad. That's in addition to our private investments that you'll hear more about tonight, including apartments on both sides, both sides of Main Street. And finally, let's talk about how we're supporting our community. Because all this development is nothing if it doesn't benefit our Ansonia residents. We have a growing amount of community spaces here in Ansonia, including our refurbished Ansonia Armory, our library, our nature center, all our parks and fields, and our new senior center in community space under development at 65 Main Street. Plus, our new partners, Valley Save Our Youth, are moving into the Ansonia Community Action Center on Ford Street, the Henry Ford Building. But I agree, let's add more. As you may recall, I suggested the area of the Pine Lot back in 2015 with Rich Bishura for the potential location when the idea of a community center was first being discussed. I want everyone to know that we have been in discussion with certain large city departments. It's our amazing partners, the Ansonia Board of Education, on utilizing an already existing facility in Ansonia for another new community center. I hope to have good news to report on that soon. In the meantime, I'm going ahead and making a request for the state bond allocation to help with funds to make this exciting idea a reality. Now, I'll let my staff add some details. Until next time, stay safe, stay warm. And did anyone know we got a new pizza place in town? I heard it's excellent. God bless you all. God bless the city of Ansonia, and good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Council, John Marini.
Zoom applause doesn't have the same effect, guys. I just want you to know that.
Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen, I want you to know that the mayor, myself, Sheila O'Malley, and Kurt Miller spoke with our legislative delegation today. And it was at that time that we officially put in our bond requests for funds for both the community center that the mayor mentioned, a possible joint project with the Board of Education involving the Boys and Girls Club building. And also, a request for demolition of the flat wire building, demolition remediation, I should say, of the flat wire building that is part of the SHW copper and brass facility. So, our two big asks that we're sending to Hartford here really involve economic development in terms of continuing the effort to clear and remediate our largest potential for development and also to service the community better. And I heard some mention of potential partnerships with Derby, and we will certainly wrap the city of Derby into this conversation. I think when it comes for, with, when it comes to community space, the more in, the better. And if the city of Derby would like to be in that discussion with us, that would be excellent. We also discussed with our legislative delegation our desire to roundtable with them and our police department to talk about fixes to the legislation to better support our police department here in Ansonia. And obviously, keeping the streets safe is a big, big priority for us. Question is, is there a legislative solution, a way to help support our police do that? Sheila and Kurt are going to talk about some of the additional economic development and financial components that we talked about with our state senator and state representative. But I want to dive in a little more, a little more detailed level about copper and brass. You may have a question on what the actual status is. There is a foreclosure action that the city has filed. It has been served on the owners, and the foreclosure would likely take effect. And the city would transfer, the property would transfer to the city's hands if the taxes aren't paid off likely by the end of this year. In the meantime, we are engaging in talks with the owner, which seem to be promising right now about an alternate path, a path where we may work together to expedite the process and to potentially move things even quicker. Certainly, it's easier when working together. But if all else fails, we do have that foreclosure action pending. City is owed in excess of $4 million, and I don't believe that's even counting WPCA fees. Turning to local issues, again, congratulations to Mike DeLassio and Public Works on snow and ice. Rich DiCarlo, the name that usually pops up associated with arts and entertainment, took on a different role this winter. He's been helping the building department and enforcement in particular. And he's been doing a lot to enforce the snow and ice ordinance that this Board of Aldermen put in place, I think about two years ago at this point. So, he's been working hard to help keep sidewalks safe. And we want to remind residents 24 hours after a snowstorm to really make sure they're doing their best to clear the sidewalks. If you need assistance, there's always a call to our building department. Rich has been very good at working to address situations where, you know, the elderly or disabled are simply unable to get to that task, but very important to keep things safe. In executive session, we have quite a bit to discuss, including negotiation of our Ansonia Police Chief position. And also, as mentioned prior in this meeting, possibilities for the Olson Drive Sports Complex that was initially proposed by Primrose. We hope, we hope to have something on the record for both later tonight. And also, in executive session, we'll be talking about our status on the regional senior center that has been proposed for 65 Main Street. Other than that, I would take any questions at this time.
All right, any questions from the Aldermen for Corporation Council? And I suppose you have to raise your hand if you're muted. If not, yeah. Any questions from the Aldermen?
I don't see any Aldermen's hand raised. I think most of the Aldermen are unmuted, I hope.
A few of them, some of them are muted still, but I don't see any hands either. Last question for Corporation Council. All right, moving on, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley. Also unmuted.
Thank you. I think Alderman Rivers wants to be unmuted, if you could. Adam.
Adam, you're up, by the way.
Okay, yes, I was just trying to be polite and wait. Thank you, President Schuer, members of the great city of Ansonia Board of Aldermen. So glad that phrase is catching on because we really feel that way about our city. Quite a few updates, but I'll try to be brief. We have a lot of stuff going on on Main Street as usual. On 158 and 200 Main Street, the contractors for that development are inside gutting and demolishing this week and last week in preparation for the 30-plus apartments that'll be going in, in that building, as well as retail and restaurants. 218 Main Street, which is the vacant lot, there's apartments planned, as you know, and a build from the ground up, plus a restaurant currently in the, in the working for that site. New Palma Restaurant, they are renovating the interior of the former Sekhams for a restaurant. And I see some movement in that, in that building as of this week with four apartments on the top. Mayor mentioned the possibility of a new restaurant that would be located at the former Massiminos Restaurant. And he kind of hinted at what kind of restaurant that would be. So, I don't need to say anything more about that, I guess. The senior center, the contractor and subcontractors right now are ripping up the carpet for the entire floor in preparation for the new floor being put down on the senior center portion of the floor. But the, but the entire second floor will be ripped up and the outlets will be shaved, the, the floor will be shaved down in preparation for new flooring. So, Diversity is the contractor for that project, and they will, they are underway ordering supplies and equipment and trying to account for the lag in time for the delivery of that, that material. Mayor also mentioned Franklin Street, the sidewalk project will be going forward in the spring. The Nolan Splash Pad project design, we're anticipating specs for that project shortly. And that will be going out to bid, and we did receive the, oh, finally received the award letter from DOT for the State Street project, the long-awaited State Street project, which again is, begins at State Street and North Main, intersection of North Main and State Street, and ends at North State Street. And that's a full-depth reconstruction, ADA handicapped accessibility, improvements and crosswalks. And that's a $1.7 million project. So, we're excited about that getting started as well. Corporation Council mentioned our Urban Act requests. The flat wire building, we'd like to take down. It is adjacent to the extrusion mill, which we talk about. We've got funding in place to, to renovate the extrusion mill, looking for a little bit more federal funding to help with that, the completion of that project. But the flat wire building is, as I said, adjacent to the extrusion mill and needs to come down, and we're hoping to, we're hoping to get funds for that. And we're also hoping, again, for some bond authorization for a community center and starting with a feasibility study, you know, what makes sense. And of course, we did look at, or have been discussing with Superintendent Debaco plans for a community center. We have a application which will be funded coming out shortly. I can't announce it yet, but we'll, we'll include improvements to Main Street. I will, I will have that announcement. We will have that announcement shortly. And we are also waiting on an announcement for our Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant, which is more demolition money for our large Ansonia copper and brass site. I think that's it for now. If, are there any questions?
Any questions from the Aldermen for Sheila tonight? Raise your hand or blurt out if you're unmuted. Some of them are still muted, so.
Bobby, I think, has a question.
I got something, Sheila, if you don't. So, the senior center, they're tearing up the carpet, the space over there. We, we had, gosh, about six, maybe eight months ago, I think it was, I think it was last summer, allocated certain office space to the fire chiefs. They keep coming up at the, at the Fire Commission meeting. So, what's the timeline? I know the chiefs wanted to do a walkthrough, potentially, and kind of see the space and get an idea of what it is. Do you have a timeframe as to, you know, the senior center completion and when we can get them in there?
Yep, they can come in at any time. I know, thank you, Joe and Josh, for continually reminding me of the fire chief's office space that we have, we had promised them. And I just want you to know that those, that portion of the floor is being prepped as well for future renovation. They can come in, just let me know, and they can come in. We'll work around the contractor's schedule.
Perfect. Thanks, Sheila.
You're welcome. I think Bobby has a little.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I see your hand up.
Other questions from the Aldermen? For Sheila? Speak now. I don't see any hands. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. CFO Kurt Miller.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening to all the board members and others in attendance. Our finance for both the city and the Board of Education have completed its work on the fiscal '21 budget audit. Everything is with the auditors, and we expect to have draft reports back to us shortly. We're expecting to have the audit officially filed by the end of the month. Over the past several weeks, I've been working on the COVID relief funds audit. This has been a very time-consuming project due to the level of detail that is being required. I expect to have the work completed by tomorrow, after which I'll spend the day auditing the numbers to make sure everything has been entered into the system correctly prior to officially submitting. Once that has been done, we'll begin the work of creating actual audit packets for the presentation to the state auditor, should they decide to request it. This is a proactive step we are taking. Because of the actions of the city of West Haven, this money is under tremendous amount of scrutiny, and I want to make sure that we have all the information readily available to them. I would guess that the packet we'll be creating will be north of 1,000 pages. Our HR audit process will officially be kicking off at the end of the month. HR Consulting Group will be onsite reviewing our files, our policies and procedures, and our overall HR functions. Over the last two months, I've been preparing all the required information and documentation. This process will take several weeks to complete, but once done, will provide us a roadmap for moving the HR functions of the city forward. This will certainly be a very worthwhile project for us. Work on the fiscal '23 budget is moving forward on schedule, as the mayor had said. All the data has been entered into the spreadsheet, and meetings have been held with certain department heads to review the requests and to understand their priorities. At this point, there are still many areas that we have numbers tied to estimates and what-if scenarios, particularly in insurance, pension costs, utilities, and outstanding contract negotiations. We expect to harden those numbers up over the next four to six weeks in preparation with mayor's budget presentation the first week of April. Our preliminary estimates indicate a very positive outcome, but we'll hold off on giving any specific numbers until we can finalize several key areas. Over the last two weeks or so, there's been a good deal of discussion regarding our spending freeze and the reasons behind it. Most of these discussions have been politically motivated or driven by people that don't fully understand municipal budget. The spending freeze is designed to do two specific things. Number one, it allows us to help address any projected shortfalls in revenue or overages in expensive, expenses, excuse me, that may have been identified to date. While we review the budget on a weekly basis, this process allows for a solid six-month check-in to help us better identify any specific trends and patterns which may be appearing, and also gives us the appropriate time to change course or make any necessary updates that might be required. Secondly, and more importantly, the city receives the largest portion of its revenue in two points, in the month of July and the month of January through tax collection. While our tax collections are set, our expenses are not. Many of our expenses are not evenly broken out and require prepayment or larger payments earlier in the fiscal year. Conservative budgeting practices call for a slowing of spending early in the calendar year to make sure that the January tax collection is strong and comes in as projected. With the concerns that our risk in the uptake of COVID cases having an effect on our January tax collection numbers, we wanted to be conservative with our spending. As you can see in the report presented from the tax collector tonight, collections through December of 2021 are trending slightly higher compared to December of 2020. While this is a strong and positive sign, we will be able to make final judgment once we have the numbers from January of 2022. At that point, assuming the positive trend continues, the spending freeze could be lifted. And as an aside, I use the same practice each year in the town of Seymour and also instituted a small version of it last year in the city of Ansonia. So, with that, I will close my report and take any questions that any of the Aldermen. So with that, I will close my report and take any questions that any of the Alderman may have.
Questions from the Alderman for CFO Miller tonight? Again, raise your hand if you're muted and if not, just ask away.
Hey Kurt, it's Tony, I got a question, so. There's been a lot of, uh. Commentary, there's been a lot of, uh, you know, writings and some of these articles around, you know, this whole, the, the shortfall and. What happened? Should we put it in, remaining conservative, and I specifically remember running through the budget process that we were conservative. We weren't going to spend, you know, funds that we didn't have. I did stumble across an article published today by the Valley Indy about talking about the whole commentary from CCM and when the. They had essentially said that the budgetary information was approved, or the distressed hundred million dollars was approved and we were going to get our funds. You know, obviously, everybody knows that, that ultimately got killed. So I, I guess the question becomes, as a distressed municipality. Why, why, why was it killed? Why, why did we not get funds that a distressed municipality technically deserves? Where, where is, I guess, where is, where is our voice with the state? Why didn't the state come through for us? It's probably not something you could answer, but it's, it's just frustrating to know that. Uh, again, as a distressed municipality. It's something that should have been funneled.
Yeah, and you, you know, that's a, you know, I have a specific answer to that. Uh, you know, that lies certainly with the legislators and voting the way that they did. Uh, the governor introduced those payments, uh, in his budget proposal. A lot of that funding was coming from federal dollars for COVID relief. Uh, which was providing that, it was only to be a two-year infusion of this money for distressed municipalities. Uh, we had a plan in place to step down those contributions, uh, so that way we didn't have a revenue cliff in two years. Uh, you know, Rich Kim and myself spent a lot of time on, you know, putting that plan in place and up to the point of presenting our budgets. Uh, April twenty-second, actually, was when we received that information, we voted on the budget, uh, two weeks later, so. You know, it's, it's a bit of a challenge, but that's not the only money that the, that the city didn't receive. There's other dollars that would have been expected by the city, that's part of the municipal revenue sharing accounts. Um, that money is driven by, uh, the extra half a percent sales tax increase that went through five years ago. Now, in fairness to, to the state, some of that money went to fully fund the pilot program. Uh, and as a tier-one community and pilots, uh, we did receive additional pilot funds, uh, some above what we had expected. But when the state of Connecticut is, is touting the fact that it's got a two billion dollar projected budget surplus. It makes you wonder why the legislature and the governor are not pushing harder to provide additional funding. To these distressed municipalities, and if you look at the amount of that funding, it was in the neighborhood of a hundred million dollars. Well, a hundred million dollars is a lot of money, compare that to a two, a two billion dollar surplus. It's actually not, and you know, the, you know, the governor, the legislature, they tout wanting to reinvest in their cities. They tout wanting to help distressed municipalities. And I wonder where that actually is, because that's dollars that are directly impacting our residents, um, with our tax rate. So, you know, while then we lost the, the potential for a sizable amount of revenue. Uh, which would have, one, provided some initial tax relief to our residents in fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. But more importantly, the way that myself, Rich and Kim had structured. It would have been, uh, money that we would put into our surplus funds. Uh, to help bolster our rainy day fund, which would be an advantage to our residents down the road, so.
So have, have we, have we, and I guess maybe this is a question for the mayor, for John, Sheila, Kurt. Have we expressed our, or maybe our frustration or, 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 you know, at this point dissatisfaction with representation that we have? Is this, this is kind of ridiculous, why, why do we not have a fight? Who, who is fighting for Ansonia? You know, we're, we're fighting at this level to do what we can in the city. Who is fighting for Ansonia in Hartford?
No one.
Yeah, I mean, that's, um, since I mean, you're posing a question directly to me, I, I don't know. Um, and part of, you know, dismay that I have, and I, I understand people's frustration with. Um, you know, the, the way the situation unfolded and what ultimately happened. Uh, we became aware of the shortfall of projected revenue right away, once we received the, the final legislative budget. And immediately started working to close the hole. Uh, we have the hole basically covered at this point, uh, so it's not really a budgeting concern. For, for the taxpayers, but I, that's not where the focus should be, the focus should be on, why are we actually not getting this money?
Well, the focus too.
Wanted to put it in his budget, obviously, the money is there, but my governor is a very intelligent man, has a very good staff around him. You know, if he's requesting that this money be sent to these distressed municipalities. Why did the legislature change their mind or change courses and do something different? I think that's really the question that should be asked. I mean, that took three point two million dollars of revenue out of the hands of Ansonia.
And, and I, and I, you know, congratulate you on being able to plug that hole, but you know, that hole came at a cost, a cost of. You know, opportunities for, you know, departments to maybe, you know, hypothetically, I know firemen need new radios. There, there's an assortment of things that still need to happen in this city. Things don't just keep happening because, you know, there's an endless supply of funds. You know, the funds need to continue to come in in order for us to do and to fund these projects. You know, you can't keep funding everything off the, you know, the backs of citizens by raising taxes. You know, you need taxpaying businesses, I know folks seem to have an issue with bringing in for-profit, you know, agencies and, 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 you know. Um, initiatives, but these are the things that keep the city moving forward. You know, we're, we're talking community center now, you know, again, three million dollars would have helped to, to push towards that. But again, we, we have to be creative and, and find ways to shortchange departments, shortchange services, because we're short those funds now. It's a bit ridiculous, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, the one thing I want to stress, you know, we'll, we will solve the problem for fiscal year twenty-two, I'm very confident of that. Um, it's not going to have any impact for fiscal year twenty-three. So the only thing that it's really done is it slowed some of the investments that we had planned out in our infrastructure, updating some technology. Um, you know, making some investment in our rolling stock, uh, you know, our fleet of cars and things like that. So that, those are the things that unfortunately are going to be put off one year to do this. But, you know, again, I want to stress, there's going to be no direct impact in taxes to the resident. That was the one thing from day one that the mayor stressed, is go upstairs, as he said. And sit with Kim and Rich and figure this out. I want no impact on our taxpayers because it's not fair for them. And, uh, as it stands right now, there's not going to be.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I congratulate that, you know, the whole finance team on doing that. But, you know, putting off, you know, capital things that we've had in place, replacing fleets of cars and things along those lines. Because of that capital plan has to wait another year, so. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not happy with, you know, the state shortchanging us when it's something that should have come around.
Oh, agreed, I mean, I, I just. Find it ridiculous that they brag about a budget, but they're cutting funding to. The distressed municipalities, and it's not even money that would have gone down to Fairfield County. I mean, this money was specifically earmarked for, I believe it's fourteen distressed municipalities in the state of Connecticut, so. You know, it's, it's about priorities and sometimes you just wonder where those priorities actually lie.
And it's, you know, opportunities too, right, in the city of Ansonia. And sometimes you forget we're classified as a distressed community because of all the progress, you know, both private and public. Uh, this Board of Aldermen and Mayor have put skin in the game, you know, we've stepped forward and said, look, we're just not looking for support from the state. We're willing to put the support in ourselves, and as a result of what you've done, you see that new police station downtown. And you see this flourishing business community. But imagine what could be done with, you know, ten million dollars to remediate copper and brass. Sixty acres worth of employment, of good jobs, of revenue. You know, the state talks a lot about wanting to create jobs, there's no better return on investment than just doing it right here in the valley. And yet, unfortunately, you get drips and you get drabs while you watch wealthier communities. And you're getting several million dollars, right, in communities that could very well support their own infrastructure projects. While unfortunately, we have a generation in Ansonia that's going to have to wait like one year after another year, after another year. So there is that frustration, you know, the question is about when was the bad news shared? The question is, you know, why don't we do something to stop that bad news from coming in the first place? We're not only deserving communities in terms of, you know, what the statistics show. But in terms of the self-help this city has exercised, putting skin in the game, investing, putting itself out there. And, and truly really turning around the direction the city was heading in, um, you know, I think you're asking for just what's fair.
I agree.
Any other questions, uh, on finance, uh, issues for CFO Miller from the Alderman?
Just, just a note of apologies for my frustration, Josh, I'm, I'm terribly passionate about this stuff and it just, it, it bugs me. So I apologize to, uh, members who I have, may have come off too strongly on, so.
If no questions, we'll move on, thank you. Uh, next up, Chief Wayne Williams, Ansonia Police Department, nice to see you. You'll get you unmuted. Don't want to hear from you tonight, so we'll just keep.
Best update yet.
Are you still muted, though?
Can you hear me? I take it? All right, thanks for muting me. Mayor, first off, I wanted to take a minute to thank you for the kind words earlier. Um, next week, so you know, is my thirty-second year of serving the community here of Ansonia, and I look forward to continuing that service. Um, thank you very much for, uh, letting me speak tonight, Board of Aldermen. Uh, I want to, you talked a lot about, um, the Public Works, uh, doing a great job, I agree with that. Um, winter parking rules are still in effect. I want to thank all the residents for cooperating with our recent full ban that we had during the snowstorm. Um, unfortunately, our officers did have to go out and move a couple hundred cars, uh, to help out Public Works. And I want to thank those officers for their tireless work during the storms. Uh, I've said it at multiple meetings, I'll continue to say to my last day that you have some of the finest officers in the state working here. And I am proud to work both with them and to lead them. Uh, as far as an update from the department, I'll make it short, I know you have a lot on your agenda. Uh, we still have a hiring process for both our certified and non-certified tonight. Um, we have a couple officers that are out injured, we have seven openings that we are still looking to fill, and we are working on that. Uh, we have, I wanted to let you know that Sergeant Ed Henry, who a lot of you know, have worked with. Uh, both at the, uh, at the Police Department, he was also our school resource officer for a while. Uh, he retired after twenty-seven years of service, so I want to wish him the best in his future. Um, an update on some grants, uh, that Sheila, I know you and I have talked about. Uh, the city received a reimbursement of eighteen thousand dollars for overtime that was spent during COVID. To try and, uh, cover some of the increase in crime that we had been seeing. And also to, uh, help out with some community events, so the state reimbursed us about eighteen thousand, that check was received and, uh, posted yesterday. We also have recently received a forty-two thousand dollar grant, um, for some technology upgrades and also help with some portable radio issues. So we, uh, we just received that grant and we're starting to put together a package for the, that technology. Um, we just say, I have an idea, last, uh, July, in the budget, we received funding for new police cars, they were ordered in July. Uh, those cars have not come in yet, um, they are currently being built, we're told. Uh, we have, uh, we hope they're on the ground up in Middletown at our vendor. Um, but we have been advised that any new vehicles coming out of Ford is going to be about an eight-month, uh, window. Due to a chip and a supply shortage. Um, also on your agenda for tonight, there is a contract for our fleet camera system. Um, and I'll answer questions when that comes up. And lastly, I wanted to just, uh, let you know, uh, last week, um, one of our retired officers passed away. Uh, Jack, also known as, uh, John Williams, but also known as Jack. He had served this community for forty-seven years prior to his retirement, and, uh, he recently passed away. So I just, uh, I wanted to just let you know that, uh, we held a service for him, uh, last week. I have, uh, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Alderman for Chief Williams?
Yes, uh, Chief, how you doing?
I'm doing good, Alderman Rivers, how are you?
Uh, good, um, you're doing a, um, a good job out there. Um, I have some other, um, things that I will, um. Send to you on the subject that we had, uh, talked about.
Yep, absolutely.
But a great job.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for the chief from the Alderman?
Ooh, I got off easy tonight.
You do get off easy, you have a couple items.
Run while you can.
We're, we're happy to grill you if you want to.
No, no, I'm good, I'll answer questions on those two topics later on.
All right, thanks. Uh, next up, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. DeBaco. Also muted. Can we unmute him?
Having trouble finding him. Got him.
Good evening, thank you. You can hear me? All right, number one, absolutely, I'd like to thank Public Works as well, um, keeping the roads clear for our schools. Very important, Wayne Williams, been a pleasure since having you onboard, working with you and working with your staff. It's great, great, great all around. Mayor Cassetti, I have to give you. Uh, I, I appreciate your level of support as we applied for a grant through EPA and DEEP. To receive six electric buses for our school fleet to help us, uh, reduce our, our carbon emissions and our footprint. Being an environmental justice community allowed, allowed us to, uh, apply for that grant. And I appreciate, uh, Mayor Cassetti and the city's support in, uh, receiving those, uh, electric buses. Once again, I have to say, eh, eh, just like, uh, Chief Williams said. Uh, I have no timeline on those electric buses at all. Um, if, if you have a, you know, a gas vehicle taking eight months, I'm sure those, uh, electric vehicles will take me at least a year to get. So, um, I'm, I'm not holding my breath, but, uh, I'm excited for that. I'm excited to also report that Ansonia High School this month won the governor's FAFSA challenge. The FAFSA challenge is, uh, the free application, um, the federal application for, uh, federal student, um, aid. And, uh, we won the FAFSA challenge for the month of January, showed the highest amount of growth, highest amount of students. That were completing the FAFSA, so I'd like to give a shout out to the high school and, and working hard. Um, I'm sure all the, the buzz has been about masks in school, and I'm sure you guys have some questions about that, but I could tell you. Um, as much as I know, and I'm going to do the same to the board tomorrow night, but I do know executive orders end on the fifteenth of February. And they will vote to extend them, um, maybe to the end of the month. I said today, I was interviewed and I'll say it to anybody, people are polarized on each side of this topic. And I'm actually at the place where they have not given us any metrics to use to say. You need this percentage before you could take this off, percentage vaccinated, percent per one hundred thousand, I'm sure they might release that. But, um, I said, you know, publicly, I, I, you know what? I, I treat it like students wearing glasses in school, I think moving on, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. The reason why I say that is without an, actually an executive order, it's very difficult for anyone to enforce it. And maybe we could just start getting back to teaching and, and not worrying about the mask, the mask issue. So, um, I, I think we can move on. I think we can move on from that. Um, but, um, those are the things we're working on, and we have a, a larger event, just so you know, this, uh, at the end of this month. Um, for Black History Month. We're, we're doing a screening of a movie, um, called Black Men in White Coats, um, about, um, African-American, uh, doctors. And hopefully getting, um, students of color interested in the, actually in the profession of being a doctors. And it'll be moderated by, um, doctors of color as well, so, um, that's, um, being provided. We'll send a Google link out to all our families, and we're offering it up to, to all students, not just students of color, but every, everyone. To be able to view the movie and have it moderated after to ask questions to doctors. Once again, update, if you have any questions, I, I'm here to answer anything I can and, and help out any way possible.
Uh, any questions for, uh, Dr. DeBaco?
Yeah, I got, I got a comment and a question. Question, uh, hey, Dr. Joe, uh, nice job. Question, hey, Dr. Joe, nice job. On the, the electric buses that, you know, we're, we're looking at, do those need special like charging ports? Or are we gonna, you know, have to establish those or wreck those in some way?
So part of the grant was to create the infrastructure first at the, at the yard, at the bus yard. Because number one, if you're going to charge, we're going to get six buses, and I'm sure the yard will probably want to expand that. They're going to have to add like their own capabilities at the, at the bus yard in which to charge it. So part of the grant was, there's a matching portion of the grant that student transportation of America has to match. And so they'll have charging stations there, and that's what we should be looking at.
I barely remember to charge my phone sometimes, so I couldn't imagine charging a car or a bus to get somewhere, so. My second comment is, you know, as you mentioned, just the mask mandate. Either way, I don't envy you in the position you're in because, again, there's, you know, two polar opposite opinions you're going to hear, but I just want to say, you know, whatever decision you make, we're behind you and good luck with it.
I appreciate it. But once again, I think if we can give parents choice, and they can't be mad at that. If they can choose to send their child in with a mask, with where the, it's, I think, I'm a parent, I got an eight-year-old, a six-year-old, and a two-year-old. People often forget in all of our positions, we have kids ourselves. So I want them to also know that, you know, I think my family would like to have the choice, and I would like to give Antonia families the same, same exact choice, if we could do that moving forward. And let's see how it goes.
Thank you. Do any of the other Aldermen have a? Sheila, you have a comment? Just for the superintendent?
Muted.
John?
No, sorry about that. It's not for Dr. Tabaco. I just have a couple of quick issues that I wanted to talk about.
All right, so we'll circle back. I'm assuming there were no more questions for Dr. Tabaco?
I just had two comments, Josh, if I could. Dr. Joe, so yeah, I just want to say, great job. Appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And I just wanted to personally thank you for all the hard work you put on with the Regionalization Committee. Although it came to an end without a feasibility finding or determination, I know that you appeared at almost all of those meetings. You put the time in to discuss a lot of issues with me personally as a co-chair, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Absolutely. More discussions to follow, Joe. More discussions.
Yeah, I know. And my second, well, my second comment is sort of along that lines, is that we haven't forgotten now that that has sort of come to an end. I imagine in the next week, the next few weeks and months, we're going to be discussing a building committee at some point in time to talk about a middle school, so.
That's a wonderful future for Antonia. They'll really change the landscape of public education and the landscape of Antonia for the good.
All right, thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. We appreciate it. All right, let's circle back. Sheila O'Malley, economic development update continued.
We already did her.
No, I have to go through it all over again, Tony.
Oh, no.
No, 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 I just, Mr. McCarskey had a question, you know, was talking about the safety of his road, et cetera. And I just wanted him to know that, yes, the mayor is concerned about the safety of the road as our residents, other residents concerned about it. And what, and we did, you may know, but we did ask the Nogat Valley Council of Governments to reclassify that road as an arterial road. And what that does is, is it then puts that in a, in a category where we can get some federal funding to make safety corrections for the residents who live there and those who pass through. So just, you know, stand by because it's the mayor's intent to have a supply for, for the funding to redo the road. And that, you know, to hopefully clear, make that a safe passageway. And, you know, your Aldermen are fully supportive of that initiative as well. So I just wanted, just wanted to mention that. I also forgot to mention that that we were contacted by a company who provides scooters to, to urban areas. And they thought that Antonia was, because of the attention we're getting for our downtown, they thought that we would make an interesting test case. So more to come on that, those scooters. And what that, what that will mean for Antonia. Okay.
The battery-powered ones on the, you usually see on like the corners of New York City and stuff?
Yes.
That'll be cool.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. That's, that's it for now.
Can't wait to see Chicago on one of those.
As long as you have like Bravo Eight or Bravo Nine, I said, close by.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Chris, for sticking around. We, I considered waiting until the end of executive session to come back to that, but apologies. All right, so that ends the public official session. We'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee?
Josh, I'd like to make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct, please.
A second.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Alderman Ramon, second by Alderwoman Tar. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have other, any other committee reports? Any other subcommittees? Any of the Aldermen want to report on anything they've, they've been to in the last month? Like, sure, in this case, in the last two months. Alderman Cassetti?
Yeah, for the Fire Marshals Report, the most recent one for this past month. 11 motor vehicle accidents covered, one carbon dioxide or monoxide, one smoke odor investigated, one vehicle fire, one structure, 15 cooking from our favorite place up at the North End. Three alarm systems activated, two natural propane leaks, six systems that were false, and three electrical. There were also nine for the public service, good intent, they're miscellaneous. All total were 52. That's for the Fire Marshals Report for December 1st to December 31st. I'm sorry, I said before it was January. The January would be forthcoming.
All right, thank you. Any other reports?
Josh, I'll just give a brief report, a final report on the Temporary Regional School Study Committee. The statute, the statute allowed for four years for us to study this, actually two years, and then we were extended by an additional two years. Unfortunately, time ran out on us. There were, you know, we have been studying this for the better part of four years. And I, I mean, I'll refer you to the report and to the press release. There were some points of contention that we weren't able to come to agreement on, some lively discussions at certain points. But ultimately, we weren't able to make a determination one way or another as to feasibility. Hopefully, this is just a precursor, and we can, this is something that we can continue to look at between the Valley Communities going forward, both on, you know, the educational side and the municipal side. But that is the, pretty much the final report. Statutorily, Derby's committee members lost their charge on February 6th, and we lost our charge today. So the committee is officially dissolved.
And Joe, I just want to thank you for your leadership on that committee. I only served for the last couple of years as a, as a replacement. But you served the full four years as, as the co-chair, yourself, and also Steve, the full four years, as far as Aldermen go. I mean, there were multiple members. I would thank them all, and as well as the Derby members. But having only served two years and it felt like 100, I can't even imagine what four years feels like. So, but thank, thanks everyone for that.
As the song goes, we did our time, right, Josh?
Yeah, right. But I agree with you that there was some really good information that came out of that. I think it's probably just the beginning of some, of some collaboration down the road.
A second, Joshua's thanks, by the way. Nice job, Joe.
Yeah, Joe.
Everybody involved.
Yeah.
Any other committee reports from the Alderman?
I have, I can't actually find it from Arms. You may have it, Josh?
Uh, yes, but I'm running a meeting right now.
Yeah, go ahead. No, that's okay. No, that's okay. That's okay. Continue on.
Kind of busy here, Chicago. And, oh, Joe, you have another one?
Land use for the month of January, I think should be noted. Building was 3,200, electrical 3,500. HVAC permits were at 1,200, plumbing at 900. Demolitions 405, 1,400 for zoning, 1,000 for planning and zoning. And our blight enforcement was at $73,780. Total of $87,096. Bravo.
Yes, very nice.
That's all revenue.
Yep, and we'll bring that, we will accept the land use report for both of the months, a little bit later in the meeting, but thank you for that.
Can, can someone unmute Joe Janetti?
We've been asking him to unmute.
Oh, yeah.
The button.
Janetti's dog would like to speak. Go ahead, Joe.
He's still muted.
He's muted.
He's still muted. I'm hitting the button.
Dog's on the keyboard.
Oh, yeah.
It should pop up for you.
Joe, does it ask you to unmute yourself?
It was unmuted for a second.
I think you guys are playing a game of like lock-on-lock here.
Right. Clickbait.
Thank you. And Toby thanks you. Joe, Jamin, and whoever is involved with that city with the education, you guys worked hard, and unfortunately, it just didn't pan out. Hopefully in the future, something works out. But thank you guys for working so hard on that. That, that took a lot of time and effort. And, you know, you guys deserve a lot of credit for all you've done. And I think people don't realize what amount of time that took even go there and do that to make things better for the cities. But thank you. And I also want, I think we should thank the mayor and the Rec Department and Griffin Hospital for these clinics they're still having for these vaccines. People, I hope they're aware, I think they have it every Tuesday. If people have to be vaccinated or boosted, they're, they're there. It's a great thing the city and Griffin Hospital is doing, so they can take advantage of it. Please do.
For folks who, I was going to say, Joe, to build off of that, for folks who haven't seen the Armory, you know, it's open for, you know, winter walking and things like that. So it's, it's absolutely beautiful. So if you haven't seen it, you know, recommend finding a time that the, the walking hours are, go take a stroll through there. It's, it's pretty phenomenal.
Yeah. But thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports, or I guess at this point, just pats on the back for anybody? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you all for your, for your, for your work on this. And as you know, I assigned people to, to subcommittees and whatever. And, you know, I know everyone has busy schedules, and sometimes you make it, sometimes you don't. But, you know, I go to a lot of those meetings, and you see the other Aldermen and older women and community residents, for that matter, attending and showing an interest in, in those things. And so it, it's not just a once-a-month meeting, it's a, it's a heavy time commitment. And I offer you my thanks, you know, for, for attending those things, participating in them. You know, in addition to all the other stuff you're doing. All right, moving on, let's see. Municipal reports, we have two, the January and February 2022 municipal reports. They're both in your, they're in your packet.
Motion to accept both of them.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. What am I looking at here? Municipal report, that was the boat recommendations. I'm looking down my notes here.
Refund reports?
No, land use, land use. Cassetti tried to steal my thunder on this one, but gave us some updates. They were very good. So we have, again, we have a January and February land use reports in your packet.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? And I'll just note again, Joe mentioned that the revenue for January was $87,096 and 93 cents. And I'll mention that the previous month, December 2021, was an additional $42,752.56 in revenue. So I'm coming, coming from the building, but that's, that's great work there.
Good indication.
Yeah. All right, now we are up to tax collector report and request for refunds.
I make a motion for the January refund report in the amount of $2,530.08.
All right, motion for the January account by Mamon, second by Yaman. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. And then we have the February report as well.
Make a motion to accept the February 2022 refund report in the amount of $17,889.12.
If found to be correct. Motion by Mamon, second by Yaman again. All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining?
Now, Josh?
Yes.
Just to know, I know we don't normally accept the tax collector report, but the tax collector report was updated through December. There was no January information in there. I don't know if the incorrect version was sent. So I don't know if we could, Kurt, if you could have Johanna send out the revised January one?
Oh, yes, I'll speak to her tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you want, the numbers through December looks good, by the way.
Yeah.
We want to stick on them.
And I'll confirm, obviously, January is a very busy month, so she may not be done just compiling everything at this point. There has been pretty steady lines the last few days as well, so people are still coming and paying their taxes, which is great.
But we do, and we have the December one in there because we have a double from the previous month, so we didn't accept that in January. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm correct. It was a meeting in January.
Yeah.
So do you want to, do you want a motion to, okay, I'll make that motion. So motion to accept the December tax collector report included in our packet.
Second.
All right, motion by Mamon, second by Not. All in favor? Stain, motion carries. You know, I thought it was a good idea, you know, like I looked at the agenda a few weeks ago, and like, pretty, pretty light, you know, we're just like, we'll bump things, and then we were going to meet special. And I'm like, you know, just go to the next meeting. And now it's like, I thought it was like, you know, it's like the old 96er steak. There's like eight million things.
Coming.
Landslide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, moving on.
Beth has got her hand up. Beth has got her hand up.
Oh, okay. So unmute her, Beth Lynch. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention Johanna did file a report on Friday for this month's agenda, so I'm not sure if she just filed the wrong one or the last month as well.
Okay. We can pick it up next time.
Yeah.
So I guess no need to check on that. We just need to make sure it was disseminated.
Right, yeah, the right iteration.
Yeah, all right, thanks. All right, moving on, accidents and claims. We have two claims, number 01-221023 and 01221024. These are both City of Antonia, 75 Liberty Street, and 7 Riverside Drive, both in Antonia Copper and Brass.
I make a motion to refer them to counsel.
A second.
Both in, refer to counsel by Alderman Rivers, second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, motion carries. Communications, all right, we have two communications from the chief. Communication one, proposal of five-year contract with Ax. Uh, communication one, proposal of five-year contract with Axon Enterprise for the purchase of in-camera car system. Um, Axon has advised that if approved, the installation will be able to be completed before July twen- July first, sorry, twenty-twenty-two, the deadline that was imposed by the Police Accountability Act. Chief is still here, is there any, the aldermen have any questions on this, uh, communication?
I just had one, um, I'm not sure if we covered this before, chief. Chief is still here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, he's muted though, so.
Muted.
John, can you un, un, unmute the chief?
Got more time muting and unmuting tonight. Maybe.
Here we go.
All right, chief, um, quick question, in the, in the, um, unfortunate instance, if we have to switch this equipment from one car to the next, are we able to do that?
Yes, um, as with any other thing that we seem to do, there's a fee, but it's a real nominal fee and, uh, it shouldn't be much of an issue. We, I'm hoping to have our two cars that I said are on the ground being built, I'm hoping to have those prior to them showing up to do the installation. So then literally we're talking probably sometime end of twenty-twenty-two, early twenty-three, to have to deal with a switch over. Um, but the, uh, but the system, um, by state statute is required as part of the police accountability bill to be installed by June thirtieth. So I met, actually Axon came down, I met with them last week and they are prioritizing any Connecticut municipality, um, to get their systems in first. But the same problem that they ran, we've run into with other things, there's chip shortages, et cetera, and all of this is technology-based. But they're saying that they should be able to get our, our, um, installations done in all our cars by June thirtieth.
Okay. And then Kurt, as usual, can you just, uh, ensure we're tracking the, you know, expenses incurred as a result of the accountability bill?
Oh, we are.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, and I have one question, Josh, for the chief, if I can. And chief, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but you know, is, I know under the accountability bill, there were certain funds made available for reimbursement. Is this one of the, is this one of those where there's potential reimbursement from the state? And if so, um, have we applied for it?
Yeah, there, there is potential, and I'm gonna leave it at potential because I don't wanna fall into that hole that Kurt fell into. Um, but there is potential for, um, reimbursement. Um, but it is, it is minimal. Uh, what they did was, when they wrote it, this is a five-year contract. Um, and there is a partial reimbursement for the upfront costs for year one. So, um, if anything else comes available, we will, but it is a reimbursement, so we have to install it, produce the check showing that we actually paid for things, and then they will, uh, they will reimburse a small portion of it.
Perfect, thanks, chief.
All right, so the request, um, in the, in the communication is to approve a five-year contract with Axon uh, for ten in-car camera system with installation, five-year warranty, off-site storage in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and two cents.
Make a motion to approve it.
And I'll second that.
Can I just ask a quick question clarifying? Is there anybody that needs to be given specific authority to execute? Is it the mayor's office?
No, if, if you could give me the authority, that is fine. That's, uh, the other contracts that we've done with them has been, uh, through the chief's office.
Yeah. Yep, so motion by Tar, second by Mamon.
Tony, do you want to amend?
To authorize chief, uh, to, to execute that contract.
Amen.
Bobby.
Yeah.
Hereby amended.
Okay.
Oh, you want me to remake the motion?
Oh.
To allow the chief to purchase the equipment?
Do you agree with the amendment?
I think it was in the request, um.
Second.
In the communication, but yeah, all right.
Second.
Okay.
And then, uh, Trish will wordsmith that sexier than what I just said. Um, all right, so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, congratulations. Moving on to a little smaller item, another, uh, communication from the chief. Um, looking to, um, dispose of a surplus, uh, Ford Explorer, all needed parts have been removed, the vehicle's not operable, and the request is to sell the vehicle for scrap.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar, any other discussion on this or questions? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Stain? All right, you guys are hot to get to executive session here.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, we have resignations, we have three resignations. I'm aware that one of them, the, um, the wording on the agenda is incorrect. Um, we'll get that corrected. Um, it was the, I think it says it, in Sonja Historical Society or something, I think it's the, the Derby Historical Commission, uh, is the official title. Um, but we have an ex, uh, resignation, one is resignation of Greg Martin from the Historical Commission.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
Can we, can we take these together?
Um, no, I'll do them separate.
Okay.
Um. I'll do it quick, Steve. This, it's different people, I don't wanna ball them together. Um, so, uh, we go, let's put the first two together, because they're both the same person, Greg Martin, and then the second one is resignation from the Water Pollution Control Authority. So a motion by Joe.
Yeah, I'll amend to include the second resignation as well.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by, um, Mamon, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, and then the third resignation is, um, resignation of Hope Melbourne from the Board of Library Directors.
And, well, again, motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, we have, uh, under resolutions, we go, God. We'll do all those together. All right, motion to go to executive session, just joking. Motion for a nap, um, resolution one, the, uh, DECD Urban Act Grant, thirty-five North, um, Main Street, and this was in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Any questions on this?
I was, do you want to let Sheila, I, I understand this is an amendment to a previous resolution, so I don't know if Sheila wants to just elaborate so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we, we did previously vote this, um, a few months ago, and I know there's some additional language. One of them was, uh, the date from December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, to February eighth. Uh, and also amending it, um, to authorize the mayor to, uh, execute the document, um, authorizing the city to file an application for a grant, um, to undertake renovation of the excruc- extrusion mill, which she mentioned in her update, I believe the amount was two million. You have any further you want to add to that, Sheila?
Uh, you gotta unmute it first.
All right, so no comments?
Yeah, no, that, that about sums it up, just a little, uh, correction to be made on that, uh, resolution that I need for the state to accept the money.
Okay.
So the motion to amend?
Um, well, you can approve this resolution because it has the, uh, correct information on it.
Right, this is, where, where, the wording was, was updated. So, so a motion to accept this, uh, resolution as written? Would that do it for you?
And you need, you need to authorize the mayor to sign and everything?
Yeah, contained therein.
Right.
Yeah, all right, good.
All right, so the motion was by.
Yeah, motion to, most, motion to accept the resolution and authorize the ma- mayor to execute as needed.
Second.
Um, motion by Yaman, second by Not, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, resolution two, uh, I'm gonna leave this to finance to potential, this is in your packet, JCI Financing Resolution. Um. Huh. Is Kurt here still?
I'm here.
You want to, uh, comment on this one? Resolution two?
I don't have it in front of me, tell me what it says, just making sure I'm saying the right thing.
This is the resolution that was, uh, to authorize the bonding, uh.
Oh, yeah, okay, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, in the Johnson Controls Project, we had, uh, an additional capacity of a million dollars. So the board actually already approved the use of that million dollars, um, but it did not, and, and John can weigh in this also, essentially approve allowing how we would, or explaining how we would make these payments. So in speaking with bond counsel, uh, he would like this resolution, uh, passed, which allows us to pay the vendors directly. Uh, the other way would have been having the vendors paid directly by Bank of America at the close. Uh, but that would have forced our vendors, uh, some of them to wait two, two and a half months, which we didn't think was appropriate. So this, again, this money was already authorized to be used, this is more just, uh, a mechanical, uh, process to make sure that we are just dotting all the Ts, or dotting all the Is, crossing all the Ts when it comes to the payments of it.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion, uh, to adopt resolution two by Rivers, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Not, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh. Hi.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, motion. Thank you for that explanation. Uh, resolution three, uh, this is the license agreement for, uh, the ice cream truck, um, pending insurance, this is for Super Softy, um.
Mr. Softy.
So I can say, yeah, you want to be, uh, formal, Mr. Softy.
Mr. Softy, my bad.
He has provided me with his certificate of insurance, which I will flex to the final agreement.
All right, that was my question. And this is, this, we've done this, if you've been an alderman for a few years, we've done this, I think, every couple of years.
Yeah.
A two-year, um, license agreement. And, uh, we've been assured that the insurance is, is good too, so we have a motion to, uh, adopt this?
Yeah.
Thanks, Rivers, second.
River, uh, motion by River, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstaining, all right, motion carries. Uh, resolution four, this is the Charter Revision Resolution. I'm gonna put this up here because I'm not gonna try to summarize this, it's very brief, but, um, right on, on up the, uh, the wording here.
So Charter Revision can be commenced by a vote of the legislative body, of course, the Board of Aldermen. Following the, um, this vote, if it is successful, the mayor would nominate, uh, individuals to serve on a Charter Revision Commission. Um, those, uh, members must, uh, the, the membership must basically conform with the requirements of state statute, which requires a certain minority of the group, um, be city officials, and the rest to be residents that do not hold any office, elective or otherwise, in the City of Ansonia. So that list would be coming at a future meeting. Once, uh, those members are impaneled, they would then proceed, uh, with a public hearing to begin their work. And another public hearing must be called before they pass any recommendations for Charter Revision to this Board of Aldermen. And of course, it's this Board of Aldermen that has the ultimate say as to whether any of the recommendations go to the ballot in November for final approval by the residents of the City of Ansonia. Um, just in case anyone's new to the process, Charter cannot be revised without that, that direct vote of the residents of the City of Ansonia, um, on the ballot, whether it be November or otherwise, or at a different time.
Yes, so this, this resolution is simply, um, stating that we would, um, open up Charter, initiate the, the, the first step. Um, and then the next step, as John, uh, stated, would be, um, the mayor nominating specific members, which would then come back as well.
Just a point of discussion is I, I think it would be important as well, um, to have a, and I, I'd like to, um, make the proposal that it be Josh, but I'd like to basically have a point person from this board with the mayor's office to talk sort of about in discussions with the appointment of, uh, what we're looking at specifically, sort of some of the things that we want to see revised, because going through the Charter, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of language cleanup that could take a lot of time. And I guess one of the things I, I know that has been just discussed publicly, um, and amongst thi- this board's members is kind of the timeframe for the budget. And I know that's a priority that we want to try to address. So I, I think it's kind of important to narrow the issues a little bit. If we're trying to see something either for the November, um, ballot, um, we're gonna have a fixed timeframe if that's what we're going for, John. So I just think it's important to have somebody for, you know, some discussion about kind of what those ti- what those issues should be. Obviously, the Charter Revision Commission themselves can explore addition of items i- i- if need be and, and bring that stuff up. But I just think it's, you know, kind of what we're looking for in terms of the revision and what, you know, kind of the i- issues we've identified, as opposed to kind of starting at the beginning of the Charter and trying to look to revise the whole thing, um, and clean up a lot of the stuff that, um, may or may not be a priority.
And then Joe?
Joe?
Yeah, Joe, you sound.
Hey, Joe, there you go.
I did it eight, I did it like seven or eight years ago. I think it's, I, I, I think we should make Josh that guy.
That means I, I think Josh might be a little busy.
I think, Joe.
Yeah, I think he's busy.
You don't take this on, we're just gonna nominate you for everything.
Yeah.
I see Tony raising his hand, it looked like it, he wants the job.
No, I had a question. So when we had discussed this, Joe, didn't you say there was some, I think it was a July or an August deadline that the changes had to be, I guess, you know, finalized for the ballot at that point?
Access, normally it's two weeks after whatever, whatever the primary date that is set by the Secretary of State. To get this on the ballot, we really want anything finalized and passed by the end of August to be safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're so well-versed in this, Joe. I, I think this would be right up your alley, so I'll, I'll make that nomination.
You're killing me, Bobby.
He's perfect for it.
The Chair of Ordinance should really have this, this, the joy of this.
There you go.
Who is that, by the way? Anybody?
I nominate Bobby.
That's Joe.
Okay, Joe. Go, Yaman.
Go for Joe.
Yeah.
Or, uh, can I make a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll second it.
Motion to accept, uh, by Mamon, second by Tar, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstain? Congratulations, Joe.
He meant Cassetti, by the way.
All right, so let's see, that was number four.
I'm trying, Steve.
I think that's it.
You're doing great.
Mayor's letters next.
Want to get to it.
All right, finally, okay, so we're out of that, um, we vote on that? Yeah, all right, appointments, um, we have two appointments. Uh, as pointed out in, um, public session, uh, by, uh, Mr. Phipps, Gary Cassetti's name was, uh, misspelled on the, on the thing, but, um, we'll amend that. Uh, so first one is an in, uh, appointment to the Ansonia Housing Authority, two-year term proposed. Um, Gary Cassetti, Democrat of one oh two Root Avenue. Term to expire twelve twenty-eight twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Uh, hi.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
One abstaining from Cassetti. One abstention, thank you, motion carries. Uh, second appointment is Water Pollution Control Authority, three-year term. Uh, proposed appointment of Ralphine Ford, Democrat of two twenty-two and a half, North State Street. Uh, term to expire one twenty-three twenty-three.
Wait, before you do that, I have an amended one with the same date, but a different person for WPCA.
I think this is amended one, Bobby, you got the initial one.
The initial was Ralphine Ford, the amended has Gary Parker.
Gary Parker is in the, uh.
I'm, I'm just saying, I have two separate ones that were sent in the same packet.
And it's noted as amended on the, uh, the Gary Parker one as well.
On the top with Parker's name on it, that's why I'm confused.
Mister Parker, the one with Mister Parker is the accurate one, because I believe, uh, Miss Ford is up for another nomination later on, uh, next month, so Mister Parker is.
So I'm, I missed, I missed that, hang on. Um, so let me just, let me just grab that. My bad. Let's see, where's the, so there was the amended appointments?
Yeah, they're, they're in the same, it's like two pages later or something.
I see it.
Be the fourth attachment. Be the fourth attachment.
Yep, here we go. Alright, so. Scratch the last minute of your life, going back to Water Pollution Control Authority, three-year term. Proposed nominee, Gary Parker, Democrat, thirty-eight North Colane, Ansonia, Connecticut, term to expire. Uh, one thirty-one twenty-three. Thank you, Bobby, for pointing that out. Motion by um Mammon. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by not. All in favor? Any opposed? Staining. Right, motion carries. Let's get back to my stuff here. Alright, so now we're out of that. Ordinance, none. Uh, this month. Any new business? Buddy. Alright, any old business? Any funny business?
On to executive session.
Motion to move to executive session by Rivers, second by Tar.
Hey, Trish, we'll see you tomorrow.
While myself, to make sure I'm awake.
Trish, I'll, I'll send some smoke signals in about four hours to wake you up. Um, John, who do we need for executive session, in addition to the alderman?
Um, I believe we would need uh Sheila. And the alderman, and uh Mr. Miller, if you'd like to participate from a financial perspective.
I'd love to.
I'm so excited to come with us. Call me when it, when you're nearly ready to come back into regular session.
Want everybody to unmute?
Getting there.
Did we lose anyone during the session?
You have some crazy echo.
Hey, Joe. John, can you? He want, can you get Joe back in the, oh, you're here.
There is no break.
Sorry, Joe.
Motion to come out of.
Can you mute Sheila for a second? It might be Sheila's mic.
No, it's not hers.
Now it sounds fine.
It's fine now.
Yeah, culprit. Alright, motion to come out of executive session by who is that?
Second.
Second by Yaman. All in favor? Okay, so we had six items um in executive session. I'm gonna go through in order from the agenda. Item number one, potential property sale and development sports complex on Olson.
I need the, so I want to um make a motion to adopt the resolution. There it is. So. Displayed on the screen is a term sheet for development for the sports complex at Olson Drive. Just gonna read the resolution and make a motion to accept it. Um, the Ansonia Board of Aldermen authorized the mayor's staff to negotiate, draft, finalize. And execute a contract between the City of Ansonia and Primrose Companies, uh noted as Primrose in this resolution. For the development of a sports complex at Olson Drive, uh lots five and six pursuant to the essential terms below. Item number one, Primrose shall purchase Olson Drive, lots five and six, the property from the City of Ansonia for the fair market. Purchase price of five hundred, ten thousand dollars, even payable in full upon closing. Item number two, Primrose shall invest fifteen point five million to develop a thirty-nine thousand square foot indoor soccer complex. FIFA-sized soccer field and forty-nine thousand square foot. Multi-sports indoor, indoor NCAA-sized ice skating rink on the property. To commence construction in twenty twenty-two. Item three, the owner of the multi-sports complex shall work collaboratively with the City of Ansonia to offer facility space, financial discounts. Or a combination of both to Ansonia residents. City, number four, the city shall provide Primrose Companies LLC with a multi-year graduated tax incentive program. Tax incentive program shall be independently approved by resolution of the Board of Aldermen. I make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mammon, second by Rivers. Any discussion? Alright, uh, motion to approve? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright. Uh, we'll move on to number two, Maple Street Inc. versus Ansonia Tax Appeal, pending litigation.
Make a motion to authorize corporate counsel to proceed as discussed.
Motion by Tar, second by not. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion uh passes unanimously. Uh, number three, Skerritt versus Ansonia Tax Pe- Tax Appeal, pending litigation.
Again, motion to authorize corporate counsel to proceed as discussed.
Alright, all in favor? Motion by, my bad, motion by uh Tar. Who was the second on that? Rivers, second by Rivers. Uh, now all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Number four, uh, City of Ansonia versus Ansonia Board of Education, pending litigation.
Um, I make a motion to take no action.
Motion to take no action by Rivers, second by Yaman. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Number five, negotiation of regionalization contracts with Derby, RE Senior Center, and fuel sharing.
Uh, motion to authorize corp counsel to continue to engage in negotiations.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion carries unanimously again, and number six, the final one, contract negotiation. Hiring of Ansonia Chief of Police.
Motion to give authority to finalize negotiations and give the mayor to authority to execute the agreement.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, one, one opposition, not any abstentions. Alright, motion passes. And that will. Chicago.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Rivers, second by Mammon. Thank you guys for your time. I know it was a long night, but. Lot of good, good stuff.
I am only ten minutes off.
Not bad, Mr. Rivers, I'm impressed.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.